All rise, we'll call the Lowell School Committee meeting to order and start by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can you take the roll, please?
Ms. Thompson.
Here.
Mia Chow. Ms. June.
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Lay. Ms. Martin.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
So I see we've got a lot of wonderful young faces out here tonight. I'm just going to quickly move one item that is our last item on the agenda under Communications. So I'd be looking for a motion to suspend the rules and allow Mr. Robert Gignac to speak to item number 11.1. Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson, all those in favor say aye. Mr. Gignac, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, committee members, Superintendent Boyd, and the general public. This evening, I'm here representing Lowell Community Charter Public School where I serve as the chief operating officer and am pleased to collaborate with the Lowell Public Schools and with the City of Lowell to provide a substance abuse prevention and awareness forum on June 1st at Lowell High School. We're privileged to have Chris Heron, a former Boston Celtic and local, come speak to the community as a whole about substance abuse and prevention. About a decade ago, I sat in one of these seats and worked with some of you to bring a speaker to talk about these important issues, and I'm honored and thrilled to partner with the district to do it again. And so I want to thank the superintendent, Ms. Phillips, Ms. Myers, for collaborating with me and my partners, and to the City of Lowell for bringing this forward with us. We're pleased and hope that the community will come out and participate in this event. We'll have live interpretation, and we're hoping to do it on an annual basis. So thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Boyd, and committee members. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gignac. So now, if we could, we will start with our special order of business, which is a spotlight on excellence, the Catherine Peace Stocklosa Knowledge Bowl competition for 2023. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. There's no greater sight than seeing this chamber full of students. So I want to welcome all of our students. I was encouraged because I thought all of our students were really interested in the fiscal year '24 budget, and I was looking forward to all of the feedback that was coming until I realized that we are celebrating the other great thing on the agenda, which is the spotlight on the Knowledge Bowl. Ms. Rocheloe is at the podium. I'm going to allow her to take the microphone and introduce all of our recognized and honored guests.
Great, thank you, Dr. Boyd. I want to introduce you to a great group of students tonight. So for over 25 years, Lowell has hosted a Knowledge Bowl for our middle school students. This year, we had over 100 middle school teams, over 100 students from nine middle schools participating, and it was seven nights over the month of March. So we call it March Madness, our Lowell March Madness. And once again, the Daily School has earned the title of the Knowledge Bowl winners for 2023. This competition was, yeah. Yeah. Our students have been working since October, practicing and working as a team on things like mathematics, current events, geography, literature, science, and these students really should be so proud of themselves for the effort they've put in. They really make us all so proud to have them as our students and all the students that participated. I also want to acknowledge our second-place team was the Stocklosa School, and our third-place team was the Daily School. But all of our schools had students that participated and came away with a really wonderful sense of pride for their school and for their efforts. These students will be participating next week, Monday and Tuesday night, we have the Greater Lowell Regional Knowledge Bowl, which will be held at Lowell High, and students from the Daily, Stocklosa, and the Pine will represent Lowell against Billrica, Chumsford, Drakeett, Tinsborough, and Tewksbury. And I am confident that our Lowell team will make us proud, no matter what the outcome. But I would like to invite all of you to be there. I want to thank the school committee members that served as judges, and I hope that you won't mind if I call on you again next year, because we will definitely want you back, because it's such an enjoyable night, and it just showcases what a wonderful place it is to learn at the Lowell Public Schools. I'd like to introduce Rob Doyle, the principal of the Daily School, and he'll introduce you to the coaches and to the students.
I have to say, winning the Knowledge Bowl year this year was wonderful in and of itself, but beating the Stocklosa was even better. And that really is what made the whole year for me. But, you know, this wouldn't happen if it weren't for Karen Miranda, who is one of our longtime coaches. Karen has been coaching Knowledge Bowl at Daily Middle School longer than I can remember, and her steadfastness and her devotion to this effort to bring the best and the brightest of our students to the Knowledge Bowl competition every year really pays off. The students have such a wonderful opportunity to represent our school, and they always do, they always shine. I'm so proud of all of them. And we also have Alejandro Bonilla as one of our coaches as well, and I think you already know this, Alejandro was a former student of ours and also on the Knowledge Bowl team at one point. So I have the honor and the pleasure to introduce to you Karen Miranda and Alejandro Bonilla.
Good evening. My name is Karen Miranda. I am an eighth-grade civics teacher at the Daily Middle School, and I am the proud coach of this Knowledge Bowl team. I am going to introduce our team members by name, and then Alejandro is going to say a few words about them before they come on up and say some words themselves. So this year, the Daily Knowledge Bowl team was comprised of Kaia Clark, Ayara de Silva, Sarah De Liano, Sotita Kai In, Caleb Malvesti, Gavin Minot, Sylvia Mouchiri, Ricky Nguyen, Nathan Ong, Janessa Uch, Alicia Peterson, Andrew Protopopescu, Bryant So, and Liam White. I would also like to recognize the fact that Gavin, Sylvia, Ricky, and Nathan are the four members from the Daily Middle School who will be representing the city at the Regionals Tournament. We had our final practice today. We are very excited, we're pumped, we're very prepared, and we are looking forward to competing on Monday.
Dr. Boyd, members of the school committee, and everybody else present here today, it's my honor to be able to talk a little bit about our incredible achievement that we've had over the past couple of months. As you might be able to tell, within the past two years, we've secured more Knowledge Bowl wins than times that I've gotten a haircut, which is quite remarkable. It's remarkable to say that we were able to win the tournament, but to do it back-to-back is something that is truly historic. It's a title that we haven't been able to claim in nearly two decades before Ms. Miranda or myself have even gotten involved to begin with, and I think that is a real testament to the amount of work that these students have put in. Many of them, a large majority of them, are actually new this year, so it was a very tough act to follow after last year's performance, but I'm happy to say that we lived up, and I think in many instances, we surpassed the performance. I just, it's been a real pleasure being able to work with these students. I have to thank Ms. Rocheloe for allowing me to have this opportunity again, Ms. Miranda for allowing me her space, Mr. Doyle for welcoming me again into the Daily community for an incredible undertaking, and to work with really some of the finest students that we have here at Lowell. With that, I would like to pass the mic on to one of our co-captains, Gavin Minot, who will say a couple of words about his experience.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd and school committee members for having us here. My time participating in the Knowledge Bowl has been an amazing experience these past two years, and I've had lots of fun. However, this was all due to the hard work of our two coaches, Ms. Miranda and Alejandro, so I wanted to take this opportunity to thank them for all they did for us. So help us be prepared during practice, they did things such as having current events competitions. Ms. Miranda drilled us with Quizlets and study guides each week. Alejandro practiced different math problems with us, gave us new strategies each week as well. We also practiced our buzzing, and they gave us new strategies to help improve our buzzing skills in competition. They also implemented some fun aspects into it as well. They had Kahoots, which are online games to help us practice what we've learned, and they also had a special alumni match with past Knowledge Bowl members that are at Lowell High and at different high schools, and we celebrated with food in a mock Knowledge Bowl match to test our skills against them. And they put so much effort into helping us, and I want to thank Ms. Miranda and Alejandro for shaping our team to be the best that it can be and for all the effort they've put into us. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin, for those very endearing words. Next up, we have our other co-captain, Kaia Clark.
Hi, everybody. I do not have a speech right now, but Knowledge Bowl as a whole that our city does and the production that they put on is just, it's a really, really amazing opportunity for the students to go and be a part of something that, you know, it kind of enhances skills other than sports or things that a lot of schools focus on. My experience in Knowledge Bowl has just been overall a great time. Like Gavin said, lots and lots of quizzes and like flashcards and all the games that Ms. Miranda puts into it. Alejandro and Ms. Miranda have been amazing coaches, just like Gavin said, and being a part of it, I couldn't have asked for better. It's a really great experience for anyone in Lowell Public Schools.
Anyone from the audience want to speak? I mean, not the audience, sorry, from the committee. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. You know, I want to offer my congratulations to the Daily, certainly, and to all the participants. I've been a judge now on the final night of the Knowledge Bowl for over 20 years, so that's longer than you've all been around. Still don't know the answers, so I'm always grateful to get the cheat sheet as a judge. But it was a very impressive performance this year. It is an exciting thing to be a part of, even for that one night that I get to be there. I can't tell you the relief I feel that your buzzing skills have been developed to this point, because those are really going to help you out as you move forward in life. Being able to buzz on time is going to be very helpful. But it really was, it's an impressive showing. I congratulate all of you. I congratulate your coaches, your principal, Ms. Rocheloe. It's a really big endeavor to make this happen every year, and the students benefit so much from it, and we're all very appreciative and very impressed by your performance. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I was so impressed. I was able to sneak over a couple of times. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to do the judging because the one night I wanted to do it, like, the schedule got changed, or we had a snowstorm, or whatever was going on. But it was such an amazing experience. Knowledge is power, and seeing the way that they're gaining knowledge and having fun with it is so amazing. I am so impressed with the young people and how seriously they were taking it during the breaks was actually so entertaining, like pumping each other up, maybe yelling at each other a little bit as well. But it was really great to see how enamored they were with the prospect of being the winners. So congratulations to the Daily, congratulations to everyone and all of you who put the work in. It is noticed and it's appreciated. Thank you for all the work you do.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes, I wanted to just say, the one night that I was able to go and judge, it was the most fun I've had in a very long time, actually. All the kids were full of energy and, you know, I believe it was the, at that point, it was the Pine Arts that came from behind, and the Daily maybe was a little bit behind, but one of the schools came up with a ton of points, and it was so fun watching the two teams battle it out, and it was just a lot of fun, watching the excitement in the kids' eyes and just watching all of the excitement and the answering the questions, and even the surprise when some of the kids would even be surprised that they got the answer right. So it was a lot of excitement and a lot of fun. Thank you for that experience and for sharing it with all of us.
If I could just say from up here, I love the Knowledge Bowl. It's one of the few events we have that truly celebrate the learning, and I have to say thank you to the staff who are involved and to Carolyn Rocheloe. But the students, it takes a lot of courage to participate in the Knowledge Bowl, and it takes a lot of work. My own students, when they were in middle school, wouldn't do it. I mean, my kids. They were, it's scary to be up there, and I think it isn't good fun, but it's healthy competition, and I just, it's a wonderful community event, and I'm so glad that we get to continue it. And I want to tell you, you're all winners. Just being part of the Knowledge Bowl makes you leaders at your schools, and I hope you will continue to put that effort and passion in your learning when you get to the high school. So thank you. Thank you all for being here, too.
If I could, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Doyle missed an opportunity to say that this back-to-back also correlates with his tenure as principal at the Daily. He always finds some way to recognize that he was the principal and not Mr. Skinner during these types of championships. Also want to recognize former committee member Hillary Clark, who is here as a parent. Thank you, Ms. Clark, for joining us as well. And I don't know, Madam Chair, how you want to organize the picture for the spotlight this time. I don't know if we can just have everybody stand up in the gallery here and we try to do some type of group shot. I'm not sure that everybody's going to fit into the chamber floor here.
That's an idea, because maybe Ms. Turner could stand up here and take a shot.
That could work.
Because I can see everybody really well, so if you guys want to gather.
So student participants, if students, teachers, those of you that were participating in the Knowledge Bowl specifically, if you could kind of crowd into the center, we're going to get a great picture, and committee members, if you could find a way to maybe stand in front of them inside the chamber, and we'll do it from this way, if we can try to organize it somehow. Oh, the students are getting themselves really organized. You think they'll work coming in? Yeah, that's what I was trying to, okay. All right, I'm getting overruled here. Come on in, come on in. who's joined us via Zoom. He says he just wanted to recognize both the intelligence and the commitment of students, parents, and staff that all participated. He wishes he could be in the picture.
So it has come to my attention that we have a number of students in the audience tonight who want to speak on some of the motions on the agenda. It looks like we have several students from the Wang Middle School who want to speak on motion 5.4. So I would, so actually, do, what, were there students for any of the other motions?
Yeah, I would do 5.4, 5.5, 5.6.
Okay. So I actually could do 5.4 from here, if that's okay? So do we have a motion to move 5.4 up on the agenda by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Thompson? All those in favor? Aye. So I'll read the motion, and then we'll call the students up who are registered to speak, okay? So the motion by Jackie Dougherty requests the superintendent to provide the committee with a district-wide curriculum plan to educate elementary students regarding animal cruelty prevention. Curriculum options should include educational programs, lesson plans through the MSPCA, subject-specific books, assemblies, and our field trips. So I believe the secretary will call your name, and you can, are you going to speak one at a time? Is that the plan? Okay, good. Remember that you speak into the microphone nice and clearly so we can hear you. Thank you.
Peter Cody.
Hi, I'm in eighth grade at the Dr. Anne Wang Middle School, and we are working on our Generation Citizens project, which is focused in on animal cruelty prevention education. So what is animal cruelty? Animal cruelty is also known as animal abuse and animal neglect, and animal cruelty is the infliction by humans of suffering or harm upon non-human animals. A major root cause of animal cruelty is being exposed to domestic violence and not knowing the commitment it takes to own a pet. Some examples are failing to provide for the animal, exerting violence on an animal, allowing the animal to suffer, leaving an animal in a hot car, or abandoning an animal.
Hi, I'm Rhoda Amin, and I will be covering statistics and data regarding animal cruelty. According to the U.S. Humane Society and the link between animal cruelty and human violence, one study found that 16% of offenders started abusing animals and graduated to violent crimes against humans. 71% of domestic violence victims reported that their abusers also targeted pets. And last but not least, pet abuse had occurred in 88% of families under supervision for physical abuse. These statistics show just how easy it is for people to be exposed to animal cruelty. It's also important to remember that abused pets often end up in animal shelters. Animal shelters do not always have space, and these animals often end up getting euthanized. Next, we have our very own data collected from middle schools. Next, we have our very own data collected from middle schools across the LPS district. We asked students and even teachers how major of a problem is animal cruelty on a scale from 1 to 10. 19.7% of responses answered both 7 and 8. 16.6% of responses answered with 10. We also asked them if they've ever personally witnessed animal cruelty, and 76% of responses answered yes. Various responses also spoke about the specific time they've witnessed animal cruelty. Most of these responses involved people exerting violence onto their pets or animals, and we find this extremely alarming. Thank you.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here, okay. So Rhonda Amin?
She just went.
She just went, okay. So who's going now?
Aiden Samari.
Okay. Did you sign up?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. Well, I'm going to be covering how we got here. So after choosing animal cruelty as our topic for our Generation Citizens project, we researched and contacted people who helped us figure out what we can do to prevent animal cruelty. Darlene Wood, an animal cruelty compliance officer from LPD, asserted that the best way to prevent animal cruelty is the root of education. Since then, we have worked our way towards this by researching humane education programs and much more, including getting in contact with the school committee.
Hi, I'm Sophia Espilcuita, and we are proposing that you incorporate a curriculum regarding the issue of animal cruelty prevention and care across the district for elementary grades. It would be incredibly beneficial for these young kids to be educated about animal cruelty and how to properly take care of animals early in order to ensure that future generations know how to treat an animal. Some of our ideas are educational programs or presentations, lesson plans from the MSPCA, a list of generated books, or field trips or assemblies. Thank you all so much for your time.
So I believe the motion speaks for itself. I'm just looking for a plan from the administration about how to incorporate that. I would need a first and a second. I forgot to do that.
Do you just need a second?
Oh, I need a second, sorry. Ms. Martin, second. All those in favor of adding, taking a look at adding this to the curriculum, say aye. Aye, the ayes have it. Thank you very much to the students at the Wang School for coming out and sharing your information with us. So the next, and I'm going in order of student age. We have a couple of middle school students from the Bartlett School here to speak on
5.5.
5.5?
That's what I have, 5.5.
Yep. And I would ask Ms. Martin if you would come up for that one. Thank you.
I'll need the agenda in front of me, but I guess not. Okay, so let's see. Motion 5.5 by Jackie Dougherty. Request the superintendent to provide the committee with a report in June that outlines facility improvements, costs, and timelines targeted to those schools most in need of repairs to support fair and adequate learning environments across the district. Priority schools include, but are not limited to, the Career Academy and the Bartlett Community Partnership School. For the Career Academy, the immediate concerns are to install the grant-funded $25,000 worth of culinary equipment that has been in storage for six years, to upgrade bathrooms and to provide for an outdoor physical activity space such as basketball. The Bartlett Community Partnership School also requires significant bathroom upgrades, replacement of lockers, and missing ceiling floor tiles throughout the school, as well as an immediate need for a temporary wheelchair ramp while waiting for a permanent one. So we've had a first and a second. Would the maker of the motion like to speak?
I'd like to hear it from the speakers first, if we could. We'll call the first speaker.
Bella Figueroa.
My name is Isabella Figueroa, and I'm here to represent Bartlett Community Partnership School. First, we just want to say thank you again on behalf of the Bartlett for the repairs we've seen already. That includes the ceiling tiles measuring for our new lockers and the repair on the gym floor. However, there are some other things that we would like to see change, starting with the bathroom. The girls' bathroom on the 349 building is in terrible condition. Most of the stalls do not lock, not all of the toys flush, and the floor is in poor condition. How are we expected to productively work for six hours a day, but when we need to relieve ourselves of a break, the bathroom is basically unusable? We want to be able to have space when using the bathroom. 14 different classrooms shouldn't be cladded into one bathroom, and that's just for the females. In the males' bathroom, there's a broken toilet, broken urinals, and the majority of the stalls do not lock. That's not at all acceptable. The bathroom is a shared space, should it should feel like one, not like one where you have to wait to your private business. Nobody should have to wait for an available stall to open with a working lock to do something as simple as peeing. Anybody is entitled to a locking stall and functional toilet. Another thing we would like to see fixed are the cracks in our school's building and floor. There are some things that we can ignore in the Bartlett, but the cracks in the floor and walls is not one. Cracks in the floor start off small but can eventually turn into something much more serious. It starts off with a small It starts off with a small crack that can lead to separating on the floor. Same scenario with the wall. The cracks in the wall can often start off as something that doesn't need to be recognized as an issue right away, but can quickly escalate to a big issue. An example of that would be insect infestation. If we can prevent something, why not do it now? I may only have a couple of weeks left of being at the Bartlett as an eighth grader, but why not try to better it for the future kids and staff? I didn't notice these issues as a little kid, but the older I got, the more I recognized the issues, the more I wanted to do something about it. Now that I'm actually doing it, I'm passionate about it and can't wait to see the changes, if you guys agree. Thank you Jackie Doherty and Eric Gitcher for the changes you guys have done for the Bartlett already, and thank you all for your time.
Malaya Um.
My name is Malia Um and I am here to represent the Bartlett Community Partnership School. On behalf of the Bartlett, we would like to thank you because recently we have been seeing improvements in fixing ceiling tiles and more. This improvement shows that our advocacy is working and we want to continue advocating for our school's health. The Bartlett has been experiencing lack of repair and fixing. For an example, since 2019, we've had a bubbler that has brown water. Now in 2023, the water bubbler doesn't even work. This has brought to our attention because we acknowledge the fact that we were supposed to get water stations but never got them. This isn't fair to students who cannot bring water from home and need hydration. Furthermore, we have realized some students are not able to focus on classwork because of how hot the temperature in classrooms are. Some classrooms are not privileged enough to have air conditioning and we want answers to what is the maximum capacity of electricity and how do we get more electricity?
Thank you very much. Thank you to both our speakers. Ms. Doherty. Thank you. I just wanted to say that we are seeing a wave of student involvement now and I think that it's a wonderful thing. Students, families, staff, those are the people on the front lines that we need to be listening to. And what started, as you can see from my motion, I'm very concerned about equity in terms of the facilities that our kids are learning in. And I know everybody can't have a brand-new school, but that doesn't mean we can't have clean schools with toilets that work, furniture that's not broken, you know, those sorts of things, schools that people can be proud of. And one of the eighth graders at the Bartlett School that I met with when I was invited to their classroom said something that has haunted me for the two weeks since that meeting. And it was, "We go to other middle schools and we see what they look like. Why can't we have a school like that?" And that's absolutely true. So I just, I apologize, it's not online, but I will get this material electronically to our records keeper and Dr. Boyd. These are some pictures I had in my phone from some visits that I've taken in the last couple of weeks. And I did hand them out. So the first one is Lowell High Honors Night last night. And there's a bunch of trash you can see outside the building. So some of this is on us as a district, keeping our schools clean. The second picture is a Sullivan School classroom that was pointed out to me at a walk-through I had. Now, I had gotten several complaints about cleanliness and I notified our director of facilities, "I'll come after April vacation, we'll schedule in advance." Dr. Boyd was aware of that. So it was a planned visit. This is a classroom, a corner full of mouse droppings and dust. Now, I know we have a rodent issue, I know we're trying to come in, I think it's twice a month, and there's plans in place and everybody's got to take part. You can't leave food, leave loose food in the classroom overnight, but the maintenance staff has to be there every night, sweeping and vacuuming, whatever, wiping down the floors in order to stay on top of this. And I don't think that's happening consistently. There's also a picture of the Bartlett School lockers. If you walk into the Bartlett School and you look down the hall, the color of the lockers is perfect, it matches the floor, but they are so beaten up and broken and old. It's, I was embarrassed. This is not how we should, our school should look. And no eighth grader should walk into his school and say, "Is my education not as important as another eighth grader who, his school is not in the acre or not in the lower highlands? That's not right." So, and there's also a picture of the Bartlett bathroom. That one, I was told that the only toilet you see, the one that doesn't have a door, is the one that's working in that bathroom. And the ceiling tiles. Now, some of this, I think they had a counselor out after me who was able to get DPW over the next day. So as one of the student speakers mentioned, some saw some improvements and that encouraged the students, but this is not a fly-by-night thing. This is, we have to be consistent, we have to do our part as the tenants in the building to keep them clean and not have broken furniture and old, broken lockers. I had a motion several years ago to replace those lockers, it's my understanding, and that motion passed. My understanding was we were going to use perfectly good lockers from the high school, miscommunication, they ended up being trashed instead of reused, which I get it, but we shouldn't have to be back here again saying, "The Bartlett School deserves lockers," right? So the motion for now is to have a report back, and I asked for June because I want to be working on this over the summer. And I think once we get the report, we should ask to have a joint meeting between the city council and the school committee facilities, because I, as I said from the beginning, I take ownership that some of this is on us as a district. We have to do a better job of keeping our buildings clean and rodent-free and our furniture in working order. And I would respectfully ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the motion? Ms. Thompson.
I just want to thank the speakers. It does take a lot of bravery to come forward and you guys did a really wonderful job at speaking of what you want to have, which is pride in your school and which is more than deserved. Looking at some of these images, which Ms. Doherty said will be, you know, accessible to the public, it's concerning. I think that, you know, overall, we want everybody to like where they are and feel comfortable in their school. And again, to your point, Ms. Doherty, not everybody can have a new school, which we would love if everybody could have a new school, but you know, the basics, I mean, functioning bathrooms, obviously, you know, if you know you have to go to the bathroom and there's going to be a long line, that's just not something that's acceptable. So we need to have functioning bathrooms and we need to have as much as we can keeping to our cleanliness of the facility. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Ms. Turner.
Thank you. I also agree with my colleagues as well. And again, thank you to our students that are here to speak about the issues that matters to them. And I wholeheartedly believe that, you know, in order for our students to succeed in their education is going to a building where they feel inviting and it's something that's clean. So I feel like this is something I would definitely support. And that brought back the motion I put recently about the high school, so very similar situation and I think we all need to work together about that. Thank you.
Excellent. No other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Our next motion, 5.6, by Ms. Doherty. Request the district fund a community school manager position for the Career Academy as they have for all other community schools, returning the position that was removed when the grant expired. In addition, provide funding to the Career Academy based on the total number of students currently matriculating at the school rather than a much lower student prediction. This should enable the addition of priority positions as requested by the Academy's school site council. Seconded by Ms. Turner. We do have several registered speakers. If the clerk could introduce the first.
Lauren Champion.
Okay.
Anthony Mitchell.
Thank you guys for taking the time to listen today. I go by the name of Anthony Mitchell. I'm a young 26-year-old entrepreneur, full-time. I am a graduate from the Career Academy. You know, growing up, I didn't have it easy. I grew up with a single mom, seen a lot of things growing up. I didn't really have a clear vision of what I wanted to do in life out of high school or even during high school. And I didn't really have any mentors or anyone to look up to or anyone to make me feel like they understood me. When I went to the Career Academy, I felt understood. I felt like I had people who I could call, you know, people that I could look up to, people that were my mentors, not only my teachers, but people that were going to guide me in the right direction. They gave us many, you know, different opportunities such as youth build program where I was able to learn carpentry and actually build a classroom downstairs at the Career Academy. It was something that was really fun, being able to see all the smiles on our face after we was able to build it and create it and see the finished work. They brought many guest speakers who were also once in the same situations as many of the students that go there were in. They opened our minds to growth and many opportunities. Being involved in a smaller school environment and having teachers to be able to have more time to work with me and understand me was a game changer and a reason why I graduated high school. I think the hardest thing in life is to be understood, right? The Career Academy did an exceptional job at making sure every student was understood no matter the circumstances and made sure they had the guidance and resources they needed to get to the next level of success. If it was, it was hard for me to get that time or understanding from a school with thousands of kids. Some of us just need a little bit more attention and a little bit more understanding to feel comfortable in being who we are. But understand that understanding only comes from those who have been in the situations that we have been in. All of the teachers knew exactly what to say at the right time to make us feel accepted. Without the Career Academy, I wouldn't be the person I am today, having five successful online businesses such as an Airbnb business, marketing business, credit repair business, and helping thousands of people around the world who struggled with what I struggled with growing up. I'm happy to say that I am a product of the Career Academy and I thank them for helping me become the person I am today. Thank you guys for your time.
Lauren Champion.
Hey, everyone. My name is Dr. Lauren Campion and I've worked in Lowell Public Schools for eight years. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight on an issue that I care deeply about, which is equitable funding for the Career Academy Alternative High School. And I want to make it clear, I'm here tonight, you know, solely to advocate for the students. Before starting my current role as the Director of the Student Resource Center, I was a community school manager for seven years, the first six of which I spent coordinating partnerships at the Career Academy and running its Engagement Center Credit Recovery Program. The Career Academy is a powerhouse. The school supports students who thrive in a smaller setting than the giant high school across town, as you heard Anthony discuss. Students don't just get sent there for bad behavior. Some do, but most choose to stay at the school because of its smaller supportive environment. This has never been more critical now than now with hundreds of students dropped out of school or at risk of dropping out. The school enrolls Hispanic and Latino students at higher proportions than the district average and as we know from our district's strategic goals, this is a priority area for us. The school currently houses a total of 140 students, according to our student information system, contrary to the 60 that were projected for this year. The Engagement Center program, which has 72 students in addition to the Career Academy's 68, has been exclusively grant-funded since it began eight years ago. Not a dollar of district funding follows those students when they transfer from Lowell High. All of the 140 students face barriers to attending a traditional school setting and the majority of them thrive upon transfer, as you heard from Anthony tonight. So to be clear, the school's actual enrollment with its Engagement Center program more than doubles the district's projected 60. If you add the 20 long-term suspended students that we educate there, it nearly triples it. And yet, I've heard talks of dwindling enrollment when justifying a reduction of over $5,000 per people from last year in your proposed budget, as you'll see on the Career Academy's page. This, quote, "very small" school graduated nearly 10% of the class of 2021 and did it on a shoestring budget. And it deserves equitable treatment. Over the past three years of ESSER funding, we've watched other schools get dozens of new positions while the Career Academy in the blank had to fight just to keep what they had before. The community school manager position, which also oversaw the Engagement Center, was cut from the Career Academy once the original federal grant ran out in 2021. And despite unprecedented funding at that time in the district and significant gains in the graduation rate and the credit attainment of those students, the position was not funded. Instead, it was transitioned to a central office role responsible for leading the expansion of the community school model in seven additional schools while leaving the Career Academy We then received a grant from the federal government of $2.5 million a year later, not a penny of which was allowed to be allocated to the Career Academy for a position. I know because I wrote this grant and I was forbidden from including the Career Academy. So to not acknowledge the Career Academy as a community school undermines the work that was done for six years there of the students, the partners, the staff, and setting the stage for the model for district-wide expansion. Got to get it together, sorry. While, as Ms. Turner said in the last meeting, it's true that the school did receive an additional social work position last year. This was only well after the budget season ended, after the fact, and thanks to the advocacy of a couple of administrators. But this Career Academy shouldn't be needed, need to be thrown a bone under the table like this or be gaslit into believing that it was more than the school deserved. Nearly every single one of its 140 students are at high risk of dropping out and there should be no expense spared, given our absolute crisis of student engagement. Over 200 students dropped out of Lowell High last year while they have a multimillion-dollar school build going on and the Career Academy can't even get a kitchen that was promised to them eight years ago. So for the past few years, the Career Academy and staff and students have felt the implied threat of closure, whether or not that was, you know, made public. This climate has limited the ability to support students who need it most. Of course, there are gaps in programming in our district and we can absolutely build more to support more students, but the existing programs deserve a fair shot. Thanks for your time and attention to this inequity and please support the motion to adequately fund the Career Academy.
Thank you to both our speakers. Ms. Doherty. Thank you. I don't have much to add except I think I talked a lot last week about, again, this issue of equity and my concerns about the number of students who are failing. As we had a report just recently, those at the high school failing two or more classes and when we aggregated out that data, we saw the percentages for certain groups were, you know, very, very high. And I'm not against Dr. Boyd's idea of expanding alternative programs. I believe we put 1.25 million in a suspense account for that. But meanwhile, we have a program. We have a program that is working and I want to thank that young man for coming out tonight and sharing, because for every student that drops out, that is a student, that is a young man or woman who's going to struggle. All the data shows, without a high school diploma, it's very difficult to make ends meet, to contribute to the community. So I see this as a critical need and a resource that we have in place that's not asking for the moon. You know, my previous motion talked about the academy, the facilities are horrendous over there and need some work. But also this idea of really looking at the actual students who are in the program because I'm predicting, just call me crazy, that of those hundreds of kids that are failing at the high school, hopefully, we're going to engage some of those. And they might not come until the end of the summer or the fall, but to think that the numbers are going to go below 140, I don't think is realistic. And that's the number that Desi has counted for now. I would much prefer that we provide them with what they had, the community manager position, provide them the budgeting based on the real number of students they have today that would enable them to get what their school site council asked for positions. And then look at, how do we want to expand alternative? What else is missing in our menu of alternative programming? Because I'm not against doing that, but we have a program here that we need to be supporting. And that's what I'm asking for your support in tonight. I don't want to wait for that position. As we discussed with some of the positions over the last couple of budget hearings, we want to be able to start posting, we want to be able to start that process. we want to be able to start posting, we want to be able to start that process, and we have the funds, we have the money, and we need to be looking carefully and spending it wisely. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Del Rosse?
Yes, thank you both for speaking. And Anthony, before you leave, I want your business card. Before that. So this is really our most at-risk population we have at the Career Academy. When you look up Malloy, the Career Academy, on the DESI website, it describes the population of students there as expelled, frequent truancy, DYS involvement, poor academic record, returned dropout students, suspended. And these are the students that we really are most vulnerable in our city. And these are the students that, for some criteria, they're placed in this alternative setting because they've been given a shot here. This is their last shot. And growing up in this city, I've lost, you know, I've seen what happens when kids don't feel cared about, when they don't feel nurtured, and lost countless friends to overdoses and violence and silly, impulsive violence. And it's that, that stuff that I think that the Career Academy can put in place for these students, maybe through this position, and it's a large number of students that can be truly affected by this. And I really think that it's really worth putting this position back in over there for the amount of students that the community manager position could truly reach over there to help not only the students, but the families to be able to get the resources that they truly need to help their students. Thank you.
Anthony? Ms. Thompson?
I think a lot of people could use that card, Anthony, actually. First of all, I want to thank Anthony and Ms. Campion for speaking, or doctor, I'm sorry. I apologize. You earned that, so I'll call you doctor. You know, I think Anthony was really powerful, because it's an important thing to remember why we do the work that we do. And sometimes you have somebody that brings that back to our remembrance. And, you know, we had a place where he felt he was seen, and I think that you can't quantify that. And I'm sure many other people that are in this situation at the Career Academy need that, they need to be seen. And that is what that particular place, that special place does for the students. So I thank you, Anthony, for speaking to that. I think we need to really be careful. You know, you guys know, you've heard me long enough, I'm a big words person, right? I don't like the term "at risk." I've never liked it. I think that these students are at their promise, their promise. They just need for people to be intentional about the support mechanisms that we give them. And I also want, doctor, don't ever apologize for being passionate. I think it's so important that we see the passion in people in this district. That's why the teachers do it. It's not a paying thing, right? It's definitely not about the finance of it. I think everybody who's been an educator knows that it's not the money that drives us to do the work. It's because we care about the potential, the promise for all the young people that we work with. So I appreciate this motion. I think that, you know, we've had an influx of resources come into this district, and I think it would be remiss of us not to look at, because that's kind of one of the things we've been looking at, how are we sowing into the community? And this is an equity issue for me, and everybody who knows me knows that that is the driving force for all the work that I do, why I even decided to run, is because of equity. And so I will be fully supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Just from here in the chair, I am 100% supportive of this motion. My question would be, there are a number of different parts to this that I think we may want to break out if the committee is amenable to that. The first is the actual adding of the community school manager position. I think we should take that as a separate vote, because then that will have to be implemented in the budget immediately. So, motion by Ms. Doherty to reinstate the community school manager position for the Career Academy. I had seconded the whole motion, so I'll second that. That would be a roll call vote. If the secretary could please call the roll.
Dr. Boyd has a...
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. I think it's important to make sure that you have clarity of data. So number one, you have $1.25 million you can allocate to alternative schools. That works. That money is currently intended to be appropriated to Ms. Desmond's office. Ms. Campion reports to Ms. Desmond, so essentially, this is the office budget. If that's the determination of the office to utilize those funds for this purpose, that would be the funding that would be available. There is a second, the funding for the Career Academy is twice the projected student enrollment. So what can't be accounted for in a highly volatile student population, so there aren't students that matriculate into the school, it's a choice school or students are assigned by referral. So when students graduate from the school, there's not an automatic student forecast that comes in. So currently, the way that the district is funded is that there's, students are generally funded per student. A per-student allocation for a school the size, as I mentioned to you previously, would not sustain programming at the school. The Hold Harmless provision enables the flat funding. So the funding at $1.6 million for the school, if it was on a per-student basis, it would be $868,000, am I accurate? $821,000. So the various provisions that the committee has within its funding mechanism is what keeps it at the 1.6 million. So when you're hearing a per-student decline, that's because we still haven't even reached the per-student funding that would be required to reach the 1.6 million. What ends up occurring there is that you're taking advantage of the district's scale, the size, the large size of the district. Students ultimately will be enrolled at the school, but currently, the funding's at the school where they are projected to attend. The 1.25 set aside is for students who aren't currently projected to attend any school. So that's currently within your budget. You have those guardrails in place. The committee takes action on all of those guardrails ahead of the funding season. So you've accounted for that within the funding, hence the $1.6 million. The other mechanism Mr. Skinner can share with you is how the school gets funded and all of our small schools get funded. So if the committee's interested, he can share with you, what ends up occurring there is following the budget process, as there becomes greater certainty in student enrollment, each of the principals then work with Mr. Skinner to make sure that you can do individualized reconciliation of their budgets as you know the student enrollment. So those mechanisms are in place, have been established by the committee as part of your budgeting season, as part of your guardrails. So these budgets have been built out over the course of multiple months. Now, again, the budget is completely within the purview of the committee. You do have set aside within your alternative funding. The only other alternative you would have is to take money out of an allocation or appropriation in other areas of the district, which you certainly could do that as well. My suggestion would be that you look to the alternative school budget, which is what you're funding here, and to know that you're already providing twice essentially the forecasted amount. Again, as a reminder, as a previous alternative school principal, these things are things that are the top priority as we go into the funding, to make sure that we allocate them and appropriate them, and the committee's policies allow for that and manage that.
If the maker of the motion would accept a friendly amendment to delineate that this new position would be paid for from the $1.2 million that has already been allocated towards alternative school funding. If we can make that note. Excellent. Roll call?
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rosse?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
I would say that perhaps we should, for the second part of your motion regarding the overall budget funding for the school, would you like to move forward to get a report on that, see what the difference would be? Or, and then we could include in that the idea of the priority positions that the school had recognized. Does that make sense?
I don't know if I want to wait for a report. I feel like they need at least one position. So, I mean, what would be the timeline that we would get a recommendation to bring? We're talking about wraparound supports for the school. And I think the schoolside council had asked for one or two positions. So I guess my question through you to the administration is, when would we get this report that would be a recommendation to add staffing?
Superintendent Boyd?
Thank you. So Ms. Turner can share with you the actuals of, it would actually be a reduction in the budget to do what's being asked for here. I don't think that's what we're looking to do, so...
Yes, we could take it out of the alternative. I'm not looking to reduce other areas of the budget. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I want to be clear that we can take it out of the 1.25 million that we've already set aside. That's really where I'm coming from with it.
So, again, this is my second-to-last school committee meeting. I want to make sure that I'm guiding you appropriately. The budget is built and developed so that your program staff can bring those recommendations to you. The 1.25 million that you're allocating works, you're appropriating that to Ms. Desmond's office. Ms. Campion that you just heard from is the lead administrator within that office. My recommendation would be the same, is to allow them to build out their programmatic recommendations so that they can bring back to you and appropriate accordingly with specifics when needed. Again, here, if the program staff is ready to make a recommendation tonight for how to utilize the 1.25 million, I just think we've got to give them time to understand the profiles of children, the needs of kids, next year, not necessarily based on forecasts, but actual students.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. And I hear what you're saying, but that plan is going to take a while to spend that 1 million. I'm going to go back to my earlier point tonight. We have a program in place that has been helping our students matriculate, has been helping our students graduate. We know we have students who are struggling at unprecedented numbers at Lowell High. We have never seen this high number of students failing two or more courses. So I don't want to hold up what's happening for the Career Academy. If Ms. Desmond's office with Dr. Campion, whoever wants to come forward with the recommendation to improve staffing at the Career Academy right away while they build this expansion plan, that is suitable to me. And I realize, Dr. Boyd, this is your, you know, almost your last meeting here. I would ask you to please just let us move forward with providing the supports. I don't see why it would be such a point of contention for you. We're not doing anything except adding some funding to a program that has proven success.
So then we could look at our next school committee meeting to receive a report that could break down based on the committee, the budget committee work at the school site. I'm sorry, Dr. Boyd?
Okay, I would just ask that my words not be mischaracterized here in public. What I'm suggesting to you is the right way to go about building programs so that we can serve children well, using the knowledge and expertise of the individuals who know our children by name, by strength, and by need. What I'm suggesting to you here in the night of budget is that you follow the five months of work that has been invested in by hundreds and hundreds of people throughout the community. You have a process in place that was utilized last year, that was utilized the year before, where Mr. Skinner will work with the principals based on the profile of children. There is no contention, there is no disagreement, other than I ask that my words be respected, that my message be respected, and that they not be twisted and turned in the minutes. Thank you.
So the motion stands that we'll be receiving a report at our next meeting. Thank you very much. I guess we just need the... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can go now back to the beginning of the agenda, which was, I think we left off at Spotlight on Excellence, so that would be 3.2. An executive session may be called to discuss collective bargaining strategies and our possible litigation under Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21. So we will recess from this meeting to go into executive session, right? Do I need a motion?
No, you don't.
I don't need a...
At the end.
Oh, we're going to do it at the end, okay. Well, it was under 3.2.
I know, I don't know why, but...
I'm sorry, Dr. Boyd, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. The notice of executive session is typically provided at the beginning of the meeting. The executive session will be adjourned at the end of the meeting to go into executive session. So the notice of an impending executive session is, by rule of the committee, is that number within the agenda, but the committee has determined to do it at the end of the meeting by virtue of polling, as I understand it, because of the 45 student advisory meeting. So the rules of the committee dictate where certain items come in, and that a special or executive session wording is 3.2 by rule of the committee, but the polling suggested at the end of the meeting.
Okay, it's just, it doesn't match what's posted at the end of the agenda, but let's just move forward. We need a motion to approve the special meetings, regularly scheduled meeting, and the F-24 budget session meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of April 27, 2023, and May 2nd, May 3rd, and May 4th, 2023, and to place them on file. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Any comments about the minutes? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. So that's all those, right? I can go right to motion by Ms. Martin?
Glasses.
Oh, her glasses. So I'm at motion 5.1 by Ms. Martin, requesting a volunteer from the Lowell School Committee serve on the Lowell High School Building Committee. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rosse. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I have been serving on the school building committee. It has just become, the schedule has become, I can't give it the time it deserves. So I would like to see if anyone else on the committee would like to take my place on that committee as we move forward. It is generally a monthly commitment, sometimes a little bit more, but it certainly is important work for the school committee to continue to have a voice on that committee. So I'd welcome anyone who's interested. And don't fight for the chance.
Ms. Del Rosse, would you like to speak?
Yes, I wanted to volunteer to do it, considering I'm going to have a child that's going to Lowell High School in four years, and that will probably be about the time that it's probably finishing up, so I think it just makes sense. I just cannot attend tomorrow night's meeting because he has a baseball game tomorrow night. And baseball season ends next week, but that's my story with tomorrow night. But going forward, I'll make sure that I'll be able to make every meeting.
Well, thank you, Ms. Del Rosse, for volunteering that. I would need a motion by Ms. Del Rosse to name her as the school committee member.
I would happily second.
Okay, second by Ms. Martin. Do we need a roll call? Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rosse?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absent.
And now we're at motion 5.2 by Stacey Thompson, motion to the administration to have scholarship grant discovery and preparation dates established for the Fall 2023 and Spring 2024 calendar to provide knowledge for students and families, increase access to funding opportunities, and ensure equity for all students in the district. This is to begin this calendar year and exist on a yearly basis. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson?
This is based on, you know, I asked for this information this year, and we were too late to get this out for our seniors to, or juniors for that matter, to take advantage of this. And I just want this to be something that is done on a yearly basis. I think that it's so important that all students have it, not just students that might be in one particular program. And so I want to make sure that we're, you know, kind of feeding this into the process. So I think it really stands for itself. Thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And now we will jump to motion 5.3 by Eileen Del Rosse, motion to request that if one school committee member receives information from outside law firm BHBK or MAS-C, that it is shared with the rest of the school committee as a communication via email so that we are all apprised of updated information and not one person acting on behalf of the school committee. Second by Ms. Martin?
Thank you. This is just in regards to basically how kind of big this scope is kind of getting of services and just the overall, just the fact, you know, when you first during the school committee, you go to the MAS-C and you learn that not one school committee member can act on behalf of themselves. It has to be the whole school committee acts on behalf of themselves. then that would make more sense, and just in terms of having transparency, in terms of everything being done, because in what I had attached to this, it stated that if work is redone by, in that attachment where it stated where work is actually redone by the law firm, then certain school committee members can be actually held liable. School committee often retain legal counsel and may use several attorneys or law firms to handle special areas of law, such as collective bargaining, special ed, litigation, or purchasing. The client of legal counsel is the school district, and more specifically, the school committee. On occasion, because legal, because a legal matter may involve confidential information about a student or employee, the client becomes the superintendent or special ed director. In those situations, because of the confidentiality at hand, the administrators may not be able to share all the information about a case or situation with the school committee. And school committee members, school committees also experience problems managing the utilization of their legal counsel. Most boards will establish a policy requiring what contact with legal counsel will be authorized by the chair or will be limited to stated criteria. Without this important management control, individual members can incur significant charges for legal services and may duplicate the efforts of others, or which may or may not be worth the time, energy, or cost. And just in terms of transparency, as a school committee, we have the responsibility to act in the best interest of the school district to protect the integrity of strength. This includes the transparency of its finances. Moreover, since the people's money can't be spent without the consent of the people's representatives, this is all from the governance of the mass association of the school, school committee. So since the school committee acts as a board and not as a set of individual, individuals, fiscal questions such as this investigation should be directed at the appropriate time to the appropriate person, usually the superintendent or the chief financial person. However, under the principles of fiduciary responsibility, all questions related to budget and finance from the school committee as a body are considered valid and should be respected and answered. And just in terms of confidentiality, I, too, you know, I just want to, you know, this just went from the scope of services just being to internal hiring, to any hiring or employment-related concerns from personnel that might have merit. And I think people are going from BHBK under school committee to school committee, and all of a sudden, we're getting all this confidential information that I don't think us as a school committee should be receiving. And I think it's, it's kind of blurring the lines a bit, and there's a clause in there about us getting that confidential information that we shouldn't be getting. And I, and it's really, you know, it's, and I, and I also kind of want to put out there, you know, I also wanted to ask, you know, is, have the, the complaints in the original letter emailed by Attorney O'Connor, does anybody know if they do have merit to date or not? Is that something that we could have answered in, in the report?
I believe that is what BHBK will be providing us. We're not at that point yet, but I, I mean, I'm just going to say for myself, if I ask a question to MAS-C, I bring it back here to the body as I'm supposed to. We don't make decisions singularly. We have no power, except as four votes, but, so I, I'm not sure where the concern is of your motion. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts, but I think that we are going to get results as a body about this, this investigation. And the attorneys are well-versed in municipal law, they're 30 years of doing these kinds of things. They'll know if we need to do it in executive session, or if they, what they can reveal to us in a public meeting forum, but that would be, that's just my take on it. I don't have any, I'm not privy to any information that you don't have about the investigation. Anything I've known has been what Ms. Martin has reported to us as a body.
Right, well, I guess that's what, what if Dr. Hall did work that maybe Ms. Martin didn't know about, you know what I mean, in terms of some, you know, investigation stuff? You know what I'm saying?
No.
And, you know, because stuff comes up, but some stuff the union has done work on, that Dr. Hall has done work on, and, and that gets...
But again, that would be up to the attorneys to, we asked them to hear from our community, from staff, and determine if there was merit, and do research and investigate, and that's what they have experience doing. So we don't know yet what we don't know.
And then my other question was, I didn't think we could take direct report as school committee from the outside law firm. I thought our only direct reports could either be from the superintendent, Dr. Hall, or the solicitor.
We have the authority, and I can't quote the chapter for you, under Mass laws, to hire our own attorney, which is what we've done, so we can get reports from our attorney. We're not required to have the city solicitor be our general counsel. If we wanted to move away from that, we could at some point, but we have the authority to have an attorney. I don't know. If anybody else has any thoughts?
I would through you just to ask some questions. So I would like to kind of zero in on what your specific questions are. So looking at that first paragraph that you shared with us, that begins, "School committees often retain legal counsel." Could you tell me what your concerns are in that paragraph specifically?
In that case, it was about the confidentiality on student or employees, and what, just basically what we've been getting emailed, because I think what people are basically doing are, they're going to the investigation and then going over to school committee, and then they're just emailing us with all this confidential information as well. And that's something we're not supposed to be privy to.
Okay.
I think that...
Without the control of...
Right.
People have a right to communicate with their school committee members via email. There's nothing we would do to curtail that.
I mean, I don't know if you've ever gotten an email from a parent who tells information about their child that probably should not have been shared. It's a similar thing. We can't control what people tell us, but...
But repeating it would be a problem. If, for example, if a school committee member took the information that they received and then made political decisions based on that, that would be a problem.
Right.
All those in favor of the motion?
No, I want to finish. So then we've got the second committee, the second paragraph there. Could you tell me what your specific concerns are there?
Just that, incur significant charges for legal services that may duplicate the efforts of others, or which may not be worth the time, energy, or cost.
So it's not, I have not received any communications, I don't know if anyone else has, from the attorneys, that there have been multiple school committee members reaching out to them. I don't know if anyone else is aware of that. My communications with them as chair of the Personnel Subcommittee, given that responsibility from the chair of the school committee, Mayor Sakari Chow, was that it was my role to be the kind of admin support, letting them know of dates of things, helping them arrange things. So those were the conversations that I had had. If any other member of this committee has been in communication with the attorneys, I would think that now would be the time for them to share that with the rest of the committee. I will take that, that nobody else has. Okay. So then the concerns here that you have, that multiple people have been directing the attorneys, doesn't seem to be borne out.
No, not that multiple people have been.
Okay, because that's what the concern was. Is there another concern contained in that?
No.
That not multiple people have been doing it?
The concern here was just that without important management controls, individual members can incur significant charges for legal services that may duplicate the efforts of others, or which may not be worth the time, energy, or cost.
So I think the scenario that that's talking about would be if multiple members of the committee were in contact with the attorneys, directing them in different directions.
The way I read it is if it was something that our attorney, Dr. Hall, or maybe something the union had already gone, had gone, had resolved, that that would be a duplication. But it wasn't discussed.
Well, then, if we can ask Dr. Hall, have there been any duplication of effort on your part? My understanding is that they would be coming to you asking questions, and you'd be responding.
Since they've been retained, I haven't been investigating anything related to it, so there wouldn't be a duplication there.
I want to make sure you're satisfied that, that that hasn't happened.
Yeah, I mean, of previous situations as well, I mean...
What previous situations would you like to talk about?
None. All right, thank you.
And then the third paragraph, I'm sorry, I don't have that. You had just read that into the record. I don't have a copy of that. I don't know what that was referring to.
Yeah, we only have two paragraphs.
There were two here, but then I think you had read a third concern.
Where it said, "Since the school committee acts as a board and not as a set of independent Fiscal questions should be directed to appropriate time to the appropriate person. So in terms of that, I was specifically talking about where the scope of services, where the conversation was had, that it was to no longer be limited to just internal hiring, but that anything, that what, any type of employment situation that had merit, which basically opened up the scope of services.
If I could just clarify that, I believe that we voted on the scope of services when we voted to go to the outside counsel, and that was in writing, and it wasn't specific to just what was hiring practices. It had to do with complaints that were mentioned in the original letter from the city solicitor. I don't think the scope was changed. It was in the original scope of services when we had the vote to go to BHBK.
Yeah, to my, to my recollection, the only expansion we gave was based on the meeting last, last meeting two weeks ago, when the recommendation was made to expand back to five years by Ms. Del Rossi, and the committee had voted to support that. I believe that's the only expansion of the, of the target that we had made.
Yes, I did recommend having an overall fair investigation, and that suggestion for to go back five years was made by Ms. Thompson, and then I voted for that, but...
Okay.
On Tuesday, April 25th, Attorney Brody, BHBK, spoke to Ms. Martin, who clarified the scope of investigation should not be limited to the complaints referenced in Ms. O'Connor's email, and accordingly, BHBK amended the proposed notice language for the website that had been prepared previously and submitted revised language for the consideration. On April 27th, this language included investigated any hiring or employment-related concern from school personnel that might have merit.
So that was when this committee had made the decision to refer all complaints to the attorneys to be reviewed and to be determined if they were valid.
And we took a vote on it.
Right, and we took a vote on that collectively, and we all agreed on it. Well, I believe, I don't know, someone may have voted no. I don't remember the specifics. I know it passed.
Yes, but I, I guess my point of this whole overall thing is to just meet as a whole body and just to discuss this more openly before it comes in front of the floor, basically.
Well, I mean, no one is going to receive any information until the entire board receives the information.
Right.
So we'll be getting as part of our packet from BHBK, the results of this investigation as a, all of us will receive that as a body. No one's received anything up till this point. I haven't, I don't know if anyone else has. The interim report that we were able to get at the last school committee meeting was provided because the Zoom function was not available. We found that out at the last minute, so BHBK created a written document that was then shared immediately with the superintendent's office to be shared with all the members of the committee, and was then distributed at that meeting.
But to your point, Ms. Del Rossi, I think we are all on the same page. We want to get this information shared to all of us at the same time. That is what we are required to do by open meeting law, and I think that that's where we're, we're headed. We don't have any information yet. And as soon as we do through Ms. Martin as chair of Human Relations and, whatever that subcommittee is personal, are you okay, Ms. Del Rossi? Did you have anything else?
That's what I want. I guess I just want most, most of all is transparency overall. I think if the law firm, if the law firm is, is in touch with somebody, I think they should be in touch with all of us.
I think if someone else would like to take the responsibility for scheduling, I mean, again, I was charged to do that by the mayor, by this committee, but if someone else would like to do that, because you don't trust me to schedule a meeting, that's okay with me. That's fine. I would recommend someone make that as a motion.
I just, as, just part of the open meeting law, as part of everything that I've learned of how this works and so forth, is that everything needs to go in front of the committee as a whole and so forth.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
Okay, we're going around and around in circles. At the end of the day, we took votes to make sure that we hired BHBK. BHBK is going to give us information. If BHBK needs information from us or from the district, Ms. Martin is the contact. If Ms. Martin gets information from BHBK, she will be relaying that information, that information to the superintendent's office, to us, and then it will be discussed either in written form, email form, or in, more, more than likely, will be sent to us to email form to have a conversation altogether. We have not had the results of BHBK. We have no idea what the cost will be. We have no idea what the results were. That is what we're waiting on. At the end of the day, transparency has been taking place. If your concern is, if you want for us to schedule a meeting to talk about how we're going to proceed before even we get the results, then that's possible. That could be made as a motion. I think the motion as it stood, it sounded as if you didn't think that transparency was taking place thus far. So if that was not the intent, if your intent is to have a meeting, a preparatory meeting, so to speak, to talk about what our next steps will be once we get the information, then again, that could be made as a motion. I think at this point, we need to wait on the information, which I think is going to be coming pretty soon. I can't remember the date that's supposed to be coming, and then we can proceed from there. That is my, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Del Rossi? Do you want to keep the motion on?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are all in favor of transparency, and we will continue to be going forward. Thank you. Let us move to subcommittees. Item 6.1, Special Education Subcommittee Meeting. Report and approval of the meeting of Monday, May 1st. Ms. Del Rossi.
Okay. So we had a Special Education Subcommittee meeting held on... So we had a Special Education Subcommittee Meeting held on. It was May 1st. May 1st, it was held at 5:30. In attendance was Ms. Peters, I'm sorry, school, school committee member. That's what I get for being organized, and then I can't find everything. School Committee, Chun. Myself, School Committee Woman Thompson, and as well as Chairwoman Desmond, Mr. Vincente, Mr. Underwood, and Ms. Peters of the Lauralee. Mr. Vincente began the meeting with a be-safe report, including demographics of the building and describing the demographics of what the students that made up the building. He described the building as a 788 therapeutic day school. Mr. Vincente described that there are many needs in the building, that the bathroom needs lots of repairs, the elevator needs repairs, the roofing needs repairs, the foundation needs repairs, the outside fencing and paving is in rough shape. This was a continuation of the last meeting that we had had as well, where we had talked about bringing the true needs of the building to the, to the meeting. Mr. Underwood stated that the building was built in the 1900s, and the last renovation done there was in 1983, over 40 years ago. He stated that although we have the opportunity to renovate the building, it doesn't do anything to help with the green space issues that the school deals with, transportation issues around the student drop-off and pickup, parking, and for the staff in the bathrooms. I had stated that these issues need to be brought to a joint facilities meeting and really wanted to know really how it's affecting the students. Ms. Peters has stated that due to the lack of cafeteria space, the students are losing out, she's, no gym, there's really a lack of space for the students to congregate. We talked about that the, the area at the Lauralee is really just, Ms. Thompson asked if the area at the Lauralee is handicap accessible or handicap friendly. Dr. Vincente stated that it is more or less handicap friendly. He stated that there is an immediate need to have these issues revolved. Ms. Desmond stated that she, along with Dr. Vincente and his team, could look possibly at other solutions. I had stated, I had stated that this has to go in front of the whole body. Mr. Underwood stated that it's all connection, all connected, that these issues are really pretty much embedded in the location. The will of everybody on that team really seemed to be, they want to look for another area, but Ms. Chun stated that she likes the idea of going out and looking at other options. Ms. Thompson asked Dr. Vincente to prepare a packet for the committee on what the staff needs to engage with the students. All of us were in support of helping out. We just need to go through the correct channels. Ms. Thompson made a motion to have the Joint Facility Subcommittee Meeting to discuss the condition of the building and to have the administration provide a report with options and consideration moving forward and for said meeting. It was seconded by myself, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:22. And that was it.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Del Rosse. So we have a motion to send this to a Joint Facility Subcommittee Meeting, which, you know, I'm hoping to do soon, as soon as we get the information from my motion about facilities. So that would be a motion by Ms. Del Rosse, seconded by Ms. Thompson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Nope. Ayes have it. It passes. Then I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. Now we get to item seven, Reports of the Superintendent, 7.1, Key Performance Indicators, Quarter Three Report. Dr. Boyd.
Thank you. I think it would behoove the committee to work efficiently through to the budget, for sake of brevity. If there are any questions, Mr. Skinner is available for questions. Otherwise, this is a standard report that the committee receives at regular intervals, and it's submitted as a report of progress.
Ms. Martin.
Just a couple quick questions, Mr. Skinner. So looking on page two, the academic achievement chart, I'm just trying to understand what we're comparing in the graduation on track with three MCAS competency determinations. So the ones who are, the students who are on track with credits in last school year, we were at 76.8%. This year, it's gone down to 72.4%, correct?
That's correct.
So then when I look at, what, the 95%, it means that they're on track with both credits and their MCAS?
That's, that's correct. The 95% and the corresponding figure for this school year represents students on track with either the MCAS requirement or something called a competency determination that students are allowed to substitute for MCAS. Last year, students were allowed to substitute competency determinations for MCAS in ELA, in math, and in science. This year, they're not allowed to do that. The competency determination is only allowed in science. And so we expected a decline, that the competency determination being expanded with some, sort of a pandemic measure, that's, that's been reduced, and only science counts this year.
So I mean, a 35% reduction seems pretty dramatic, and we only have the final quarter to make that up, correct? For them to pass MCAS and be able to move forward?
So the, that, yes, I, I was looking to see if that was, if the figures are specifically related to seniors, and it doesn't say that, so I'm not sure is the answer to your question. Students typically take the MCAS tests in sophomore year. If they're not passing MCAS in sophomore year, they have two more years to pass.
Okay. Still a problem, a two-year problem, but, so can we, but can we get?
If I may suggest, again, I don't have the figures with me. I believe that the numbers are roughly comparable with prior years, prior to pandemic. We had an easier time in this area during the pandemic when we could substitute for MCAS.
Sure. I mean, my concern would just be that, you know, again, these are end of third quarter results, so we do not have a lot of time to make up for any senior that's in this position other than a summer school, right?
Our projection for graduation is similar to past projections for graduation. In other words, we don't expect a decline in graduation rate.
That's pretty dramatic with a 30% reduction there. Recognizing that it could be, you know, sophomores and juniors, but. So at the, when would we get that actual number, that actual graduation rate?
Well, yeah, the actual graduation rate for one school year is not published until the spring of the following year. It doesn't come from us. It comes from the Department of Education.
So you wouldn't have any sense of, of what happened to those 30, the 30% of students who haven't, who aren't on track to graduate until next spring? We wouldn't know that?
No, that's not so. The, the, some of the students involved may be sophomores or juniors who have two years to pass the MCAS, meet the MCAS requirement. They haven't met it to date, so they're not on track to date.
I understand that. I guess I'm just really concerned about seniors. I understand that of that 30% that we've seen reduce, some of them are sophomores and juniors, and I have time to make this up, but I have to assume that some of them are seniors.
That's true. And so what I'm, what I'm offering in, 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 in response to that concern, any student is not on track for graduation is a concern. But I'm suggesting that the number of seniors today, this year at Lowell High School, and that the percentage of them that are being prepared for graduation and ready for graduation is comparable with, with past years. It's not that 57% does not represent a huge upcoming dip in our graduation rate, as far as we can predict.
Okay. I guess we'll find out. And I think that was my only question on this report. Thanks.
Ms. Thompson, and then Ms. Del Rosse.
I just had a quick question. The student, I think it's on page three, the student average daily attendance, is that number from students just checking in at some point of the day? Or is that for students attending the full day? I'm just curious about that. And then I have one more question on the diversity hiring.
So it's, it's for students who attend school for the day, I believe they need to be in school prior to 10:30 or something like that, but, so, so it does not account for a student who might be dismissed to go to an appointment, let's say, in the afternoon? But that, that kind of occurrence should be minimal.
Okay. And then my other question is diversity hiring. I'm not sure if that's you or Ms. Phillips. But the question is, on the diversity hiring, it says that it's up 43%. Just curious if we know the areas that that impacts? Is that impacting classrooms? Is that impacting what? I'm just curious about that, if we have that information.
They're related to the whole district hiring, Ms. Thompson. I don't have the actual number of people hired, and once I saw it, I knew you were going to ask that, so I apologize for that, but I'll get that to you like I did the last meeting when you asked for it.
I appreciate that. You're getting to know me well. Thank you.
Ms. Del Rosse.
The iReady scores, did you ever get the iReady scores for quarter two? I know the testing was in progress in the February 11th report.
I'm looking to see where you're referring to. We do have iReady scores from the second quarter, and I understand that you're, are you referring to the fact they are on page three, I believe?
No, well, I have the page three for quarter three, but I know, I went, I had went back, and I guess I'm concerned, more or less, because I went back to the quarter one report, and we are tier one in quarter one was for ELA, which was on level, was 22%, right? And then it's 34% quarter three, so that's good. It's 12% better. But in tier two, the yellow level, which is a level below, it's down 1% from 30, 30% in quarter one to now 31%. And in tier three, it was 48% in quarter one for ELA, and now it's 35% in tier three, which is two or more levels below. And that's down 13% in ELA since the beginning of the school year, so I'm wondering what's going on there.
So if I'm understanding the, the data points that you're referring to, they, they indicate an improvement, right? So if, if the numbers in tier three are reducing throughout the school year, that's what we expect. We're, we're having more of those students get caught up.
48, 35%? So, so they went, so it's reverse for... Is there a way that this can be broken down per grade level, because it's the same for grades one through nine?
So, yes, is the answer to your question, it being broken down by grade level. It, it, it depends on the length of this report, right? So the, this is a summary report. The amount of iReady data we have could fill several pages alone. So it's a summary report. If you would like further information, I'll be happy to follow up.
Yeah, just, yeah. So, yeah, because something's off with the, the numbers overall, whether or not they're going up or down, something is off overall through, throughout the tiers. And for them to all be the same numbers in grades one through nine.
So can I make, take a stab at this, if you please? There's a couple of points that you made, the first being that, I'm not sure if this is a confusion or not, but we have four quarters of the school year, but the iReady test is given three times. So, so it was not reported, it wasn't finished in time for the second quarter report, and it's now the second administration of iReady is being reported here. To respond to prior concerns of the committee, where the information on the right half was being reported to you for the current quarter, for the current school year, but you didn't have a reference point, we now add the reference point of, where were we this time last year? And we put that in there for comparison purposes. The information you're looking at in this report suggests that it's roughly similar, slightly improved over last year. We're making more progress this year than we did last year in general.
Okay. Thank you.
Everyone all set?
Okay, yes.
Okay, so we can go to 7.2. Motion to, response to motion regarding air quality in the 1980 building. I'm wondering if we can just send this to facilities to discuss?
So moved.
I'll take a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thomas, to send this report to the Facility Subcommittee. Second, and next item, 7.3, regarding TV studio at Lowell High School. Any comments or questions from the body? This report covers two issues, what's happening with the Lowell High TV studio, and information about being able to broadcast our meetings at central office. I would like to send the second portion to the Facility Subcommittee Meeting to discuss what needs to happen to do that. I think that it was a great benefit to us to be able to have another venue for our meetings, so. Motion to send that to Facility Subcommittee, Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor, say aye.
Could I just?
Ms. Thompson, I mean, Ms. Martin.
Certainly voting aye on the motion. I did just want to say, you know, I appreciate the time that went into kind of collecting the information from the actual student programming, which I think is, is, you know, what we're most concerned about, and it's really encouraging to see that this work is still going on. I know that there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot going on at the high school with the, with the building and whatnot, so it's great to see that the, the programming goes on and that the kids are really getting exposure to something that is a powerful, a powerful tool for them, certainly today, and even more so in the future, I think. So thank you for that.
Motion 7.4, response to Stacy Thompson's motion regarding DEI training efforts. Ms. Thompson?
Keep turning this off. I don't know. Maybe I don't want to be heard today. Thank you for this report. I would just ask, well, I do have a couple, a couple of questions. I'm curious about, because this, what my, the intent of this motion was to make sure that throughout, that there was, from top to bottom, and I hate using that, that phraseology, that everyone was attending DEI training. So I noticed that it really spoke about the central office administrators, social workers, counselors, community school managers, family liaisons. I'm curious if, like, the clerks are included in that? The secretaries, the executive assistants, are they also being able to take advantage of this? So I'm not sure if that, who that, who answers that question.
Ms. Phillips?
Sure. Thank you for that question. This past year, my office organized one training around customer service for the administrative assistance. The PD time is very limited, but just today, with my CLSP coordinator, we were discussing ways to provide more professional development for employee groups that don't have PD necessarily built in to their day. So we would have to figure out, how do we pull them from the workday or provide voluntary training, voluntary paid training after the workday?
Okay, yeah, I think. Okay, yeah, I think that's really important. I mean, we've spoken about how we are, you know, trying to build in, you know, DEI efforts and, you know, anti-racism efforts. So I think it's really important that we lead by example with that. So I'm looking forward to how, the resolve, whatever resolve it is that you're going to come up with. I was also curious, and I think I asked you this question before, so I apologize, is this a requirement? Or is this something that's voluntary as far as the people that did take advantage of it?
Yes, so most of the school-based training was organized by the school on the, on either the professional development days or within their professional learning communities or whatnot. So I can't say what was absolutely required. Staff are required to go to professional development days, however, sometimes there's choice within those days, sometimes people are absent. So I do want to ensure that we have a stronger system, like a system database of professional development, not just you show up, I do a sign-in sheet, but actually a system where the system can help track who completed which trainings, who was absent on which trainings. So even if you were absent, we can provide a follow-up for you. But right now, we are relying a lot on sign-in sheets versus a system where we can better track the hundreds of employees we have.
Well, you already answered that, my next question, because that was going to be my next question. And then the final thing was, I guess, how long are these trainings? Like, so are they like half hour? Are they all day? And then who conducts them? I know you said that a lot of them are conducted by, with, within the system. But are there, are there outside consultants as well that are brought in?
Yes, so some schools bring in outside consultants. We've also been investing in teacher leadership. So, so for example, some of our diverse teacher leader fellows who have gone through two years of training in the fellowship have then had the opportunity to, to lead trainings in their building. So, and in some cases, it's, it's my staff. So I think that being a large district, we are trying to figure out how can we meet the need across 28 schools? Building capacity within the buildings, within, you know, our teachers. But also setting an expectation of what, what is like baseline that each, each employee, right, should have. My CLSP, well, the district CLSP coordinator is in discussions with the Lowell Teacher Academy around trainings for onboarding new employees and new teachers. So that is, that is a start of having a system of every employee receiving, you know, a baseline training. The trickier part is existing employees all achieving the same content across the board.
And I think that, that speaks to my concern, which I spoke to you and Dr. Hall about, which was making sure that this was a portion of what we can make quantifiable, and therefore we can measure the district and people performing, what they need to perform based on having the acumen and having the knowledge. So thank you for this report. I look forward to further reports.
Thank you. Anyone else on this report? Okay, let us go to response to motion four by Susie Chun regarding cultural events and celebrations. Ms. Chun.
Thank you for the report. And I noticed that there are roughly 200, sorry, 297 cultural events that we celebrate at our district. I love seeing that most of these events are held at night for our families to accommodate our parents who want to attend. One question I would like to ask is, I don't know, towards Ms. Phillips, is that some of the events that our kid does is during the school day? And is it during like an assembly kind of events, when they're celebrating some of these activities? So you want to answer that? Thank you.
Thank you. So there are a lot of events happening. And when the information was collected from schools, it was not using a tool where we could identify, you know, who was the audience, what time was it offered? It was, tell me about the different cultural events that you offer in your school. So we almost had to do qualitative analysis, right, to, to make sense of what everyone had shared. So I know there's sounding like a lot of expectation on the CLSP coordinator, but that's part of why we have the position, is doing a better job of collecting the information upfront. Because I think in my memo I shared, we did not tailor the definition of cultural event to like ethnic heritage, and culture can be many things. So we did get many cultural activities that were shared for building community, which I believe are important, important community cultural events. But if we specifically want to understand the events that are tailored toward the communities that, the students who are in the schools, we would have to ask the question differently and collect it differently. But we are looking forward to having an improved district-wide calendar. Because right now, you should be able to go to the website and see all of the activities that are happening across the district. But we have found that there are different communication outlets being used, right? Social media, and that's not always tying back to the district calendar. So we do want to improve on like the gathering of district-wide activities. The, the website is supposed to be the central hub. However, as schools are communicating differently and probably more efficiently and effective with families, we want to make sure we figure out a way to gather all of that in a way that doesn't create more challenges. Does that make sense?
Sure, thank you. And one more thing that I also like to convey to the community as well is that I also, some of the website, I mean, our Lowell School website are very efficient to our families. But I want to make sure that we all, there are a few events that does have in Spanish, Portuguese, and Khmer. And I like seeing that, but I would like to see on the website a little bit more geared towards our, our English learner families. So that's one thing that I want to emphasize on. And also, again, I like seeing the different languages. I also shared it personally with the community as well. So, well, thank you, and we'll work some more about this. Thank you.
Thompson?
I would just love to, and of course, this is giving you more work to do, but I would love for there to be, and I think for me, one of the things that I noted as a new school committee member, was not knowing what these events were. So like distinction breakfast, I'm sure everybody else besides me knows what that is. But again, like not knowing what some of these things are, and would I want to participate in them? And I love the idea of having a district-wide calendar, because again, you can kind of map out what you can do, or if you, you know, can take time off of work to participate in some of these things if they are during the day. So I look forward to, to that, to having that kind of centralized place where you can have the information. Thank you.
I need a motion to accept the, oh, actually, sorry. We have 7.6 monthly incident report.
Submitted as a report of progress. Ms. Phillips is available if there's any questions.
No questions, we, right? Okay, we can go to 7.7. Okay, that says monthly enrollment report, but I think it might be a mistake, because there is a report by Ms. Phillips on the Family Resource Center and the April enrollment report. I would ask that we have this on for the next meeting. I don't think it's proper to discuss it now where it wasn't on the agenda, but I think we could just have it for the, our next meeting in June. And I would ask, Ms. Phillips, if you can give us an update on the numbers, because apparently, at the end of April 30th, it was 60%. And I thought we had a much higher percentage that we were promised, because we were looking to not have problems with the immunizations and all that. So you might have a better percentage by the June meeting. So I would now look to get a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent, 7.1 through 7.6, as reports of progress by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion passes. Now under new business, 8.1 FY '24 budget adoption. I believe we went through the line by lines, but I don't know if Dr. Boyd, do you want to add something? Thank you.
No, thank you. That, that was just going to take that opportunity to share with the community who happens to be perhaps watching the budget for the first time tonight, that this has been, this is, tonight is the culmination of an extensive amount of work over the past five months, with involvement and input from hundreds of community members, staff members, and students, as well as two hearings that were conducted publicly by the school committee. So tonight, before the committee, is an amended budget based on all of that feedback to, to date. And the sole legal requirement of the committee tonight is approval of a bottom-line figure of $241,934,056 to be submitted to the city manager for inclusion in the city's overall budget, which will be acted upon by city council next month. Ms. Turner's available if there are any questions. However, every amendment, every edit, every adjustment that the committee voted on is within record, within the minutes, and Ms. Turner has made those adjustments. And if those adjustments are not made, just given the fact that this, I won't be able to see this fiscal year through, the committee should know that they are solidified in minutes, and this budget can only be adopted based on those amendments being adhered to. So thank you. With that, Madam Chair, I am very proud to submit this year's budget and look forward to the committee's adoption. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Thompson?
Can I just get the bottom-line figure again? Thank you.
Ms. Turner?
And just to, just to add a couple of comments, both health teachers were at it, the PD for financial literacy, substance abuse were also at it. We moved all positions, there are 16 positions moved to suspense, equal in a $2.9 million in suspense currently.
Motion to approve the bottom-line figure by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Ms. Delay? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five ayes, two absents.
Okay, 8.2, vote to reschedule the regularly scheduled school committee meeting. So we are not meeting on June 7, that is, the high school graduation. What is the wish of the body? We can just pick a date, or we could wait and see, hopefully, we're going to be getting a report from BHPK. We're also going to be moving forward with the interim superintendent search. Ms. Martin, any thoughts?
I would just make the recommendation that we at least kind of pencil in that perhaps the Thursday, recognizing that we won't be able to do, to meet on the 7th, but anticipate that we probably will need to have a meeting that week. And I'd probably recommend June 8. I, I'd ask the superintendent's office to poll and see if it works for everybody, and if the room is available, obviously. But it seems like we should, with everything going on, chances are, we're going to need to have a meeting.
Dr. Boyd?
Thank you. So we did the, we did check on the chambers. I would highly recommend that the committee, if they're, that you put these dates on hold, and I would kindly request a motion, given the fact that you have a pending superintendent appointment. I would not want the committee to put yourself in a bind for last-minute decision-making. So the chamber is available June 8, June 15, and June 19, which gives you three dates. I don't anticipate any large-scale requirements of voting, but as Ms. Martin said, I do think you should hold that date particularly for discussion on superintendent appointment. So June 8, June 15, June 19. If any of those are out of the question for committee members, let's knock those out and let's hold the other ones by way of motion.
June 19 is Juneteenth, the city's closed.
Thank you so much. You're absolutely right. No wonder the, the chamber was available. I apologize to our community for not recognizing that. Thank you. Committee member Thompson, that gives us June 8 and June 15.
So a motion to hold those two dates for an upcoming meeting as needed?
We should probably wait for the other two.
Oh, well, we can still hold them.
Yeah, I'd say hold the dates.
Yeah.
But we should communicate with the, the membership.
So I guess we don't need a motion to hold them. We just ask Dr. Boyd to hold those two dates until we can hear from the?
And just communicate with the city.
The other two, yeah.
That we are looking to hold those.
The other two committee members.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Do need to actually take action, because you have a formally scheduled meeting on June 7. So if it's not going to be rescheduled, then you do need to take action to cancel that meeting. We will need a motion, one way or the other.
Okay, so can we have a motion to reschedule the June 7 meeting for June 8? And to hold the June 15 date? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay, 8.3, permission to post graduation mentor. Any questions about this? What is the will of the body? Do we want to do this right now? Discuss it in subcommittee?
My understanding is these positions have been discussed. Ms. Desmond is available if there are any questions. But yes, certainly, the will of the body.
Ms. Thompson?
So I'm going to bite, what is a graduation mentor?
Ms. Desmond?
Desmond?
Thank you so much. So as you probably recall, we had applied for a mass grad promising practice grant two years ago, and then this year. And each year, this position is written into the grant as a contractual position. And what the grad mentors do is they do student outreach for students that have dropped off our radar at the high school level. And so they have done tremendous work this year. They have gone out to homes, they've re-engaged students, and they, when they make the connection to the students, they connect them often back to either our high school guidance department or to Dr. Campion, who was here earlier today. And, you know, to be quite honest, we had approximately 135 students that were classified as dropouts this year to date. And over, they made connections with a significant number that we have been able to re-engage 50 of those students this year, which has been significant work that has, you know, started with these positions and continued with our staff internally to support these students, to help them credential in some way. So what has happened is the contract has ended at this point. And so what we would like to do, we do have some funds still available through grants, we would like to be able to post this position, so we can continue the work through the end of the year on a part-time basis. And this, this posting was previously approved at a higher dollar amount, but our grad mentor position is a bachelor degree preferred position. And so we had to change the dollar amount to be reflective of that. So this $20 an hour is what we typically pay our, you know, our, our college interns and staff who are not credentialed as teachers currently in the district.
So I'm looking for a motion to post the graduation mentor position by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Starriedy?
Yes.
Ms. Delay? Ms. Martin? Five ayes, two absents.
Okay, so 8.4 is a permission to post director of athletics. Has that changed in some way? Dr. Boyd?
Yes, you, the committee made updates to this. If you recall, the previous iter- If you recall, the previous iteration of the committee added a chair for PE and Health at the high school, which, to adjust this job description. It was never formally written into the job description, but now that you're posting the position, all this reflects, are those adjustments? I do suggest, Ms. Turner, or Ms. Desmond will share with you a quick summary of what that is, but we do want to make sure we get this posted, and it really simply includes the feedback of the committee and the adjustments made previously. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So, that is correct. In the 21, 22 school year, we added the position of 9 to 12 physical ed and health department chair at Lowell High, which allowed us to separate out the department chair evaluation components of what was previously in the athletic director position. So this position has been updated to reflect specific, specifically the job duties of an athletic director, to include professionally developing coaches, providing, you know, training around all of the initiatives that we are embarking on for our, our full-time staff, to our coaches, which has not been something we've done in the past, because the job scope had just been so broad. So really, there is more of a focus on supporting our coaching staff, providing us with data around, you know, our teams, and the demographics of our teams, and just the ability for us to be more specific and aware of what is happening within our K-12 athletic program that occurs outside of the school day. And then also to have the responsibilities of building out our intermural programs K-8, which we have not been able to do in the past, but we know is a significant need for our younger students, who need to be engaged differently in the afternoons. So those are really the major changes. We're going to be able to have more data, we're going to be able to build out our programming as far as intermurals go, K-8, and then also, we want to be able to provide more professional development to our coaches, who are working with our students after school, to include, you know, all of the DEI training, et cetera, that we have not been able to necessarily focus on with our coaches.
What, do we have an updated job description? Because I didn't see it in my packet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you do have it? Oh, okay. Ms. Thompson, you had your question? I don't, I know.
So, this is a long job description, but I'm gonna add to it. I think, and you just hit it on the head, Ms. Desmond, I think that this person, because of the influence and impact they have on so many students, I think that they need to attend ongoing anti-racism training, anti-bullying training, both for self-knowledge, and then for, you know, the, the culture that they are in, in charge of. So, you know, to ensure, you know, bullying-free, hazing-free, discrimination-free practices. I think that's really important, to have that explicitly in the language of the, of the job description.
Do we have a motion to move forward with this? Or any other comments? Ms. Del Rossi, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say, I agree.
You're making a motion to approve the permission to post athletic director position?
With the?
With the amendments that Ms. Thompson requested?
Yes, I think that's important, to have what, what she added in there.
Okay.
Yes.
Do I have a second? Ms. Thompson? Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Six yeas, two, five yeas, two absinthe.
8.5, vote to accept a donation of $50,000 from the George M. Sandeikos Vocal Arts Scholarship. Need a motion to accept the donation by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Chun. Roll call. Oh, sorry, Ms., discussion?
Did just want to ask one quick question. I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful donation that's being made to our students, which I think is great. I'm just curious, is that it shall be managed and maintained in the usual and customary manner by the school? Does the school manage this, or does the community foundation manage this?
Dr. Boyd?
Ms. Desmond? Do you have further details on the vocal arts donation?
I do not, but I will investigate the donation from George M. Sandeikos.
Just curious, I mean, my understanding is that most of our scholarships are managed by the community foundation, but, so if we could get that info, I'd appreciate it, thank you. But I certainly approve accepting it.
Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absinthe.
Professional personnel, need a motion to bundle and approve the professional personnel requests, 10.1, 10.2?
You forgot the convention conference. Up top, convention conference.
Oh, I did, I skipped nine. Can I, can we just do 10?
Yeah, no, no, just go.
All right, I got it back to nine, I apologize. 9.1, out-of-state and overnight travel request for Lowell High School boys and girls cross-country team and chaperones to travel to Yonkers, New York. Motion to approve by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absinthe.
All right, now we go to item 10, need a motion to bundle and approve the professional personnel request by Ms. Chun, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Roll call.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Five yeas, two absinthe.
So we took the communications out of order, that was the one regarding the substance abuse community forum. So we just need to accept the communication, place it on file, by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Chun. All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Oh, so now we get to the executive session, now I read it? Okay. Need a motion to recess an interim to executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining strategies and/or possible litigation under open meeting law, chapter 30A, section 21AB23 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts general laws, related to discussion of contract of chief academic officer, assistant superintendent, of which open meeting discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and to adjourn from executive session. Motion by Ms. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Thompson? Mia Chow? Ms. Chun?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Five yeas, two absinthe.
Motion to?
No, no, no.
Oh, we already did that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all, we're going into executive session.
Is everything okay?